Meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue in Bakersfield, California. Grounded in ideas, energy, and innovation, Kern County's vision is to be a driving force for the world's fifth-largest economy. And our mission is to exceed expectations of the communities we serve, changing the way they feel about government, those who manage it, and the services it provides. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Board to reconvene, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisor Peters?
Here.
Supervisor Scribner?
Here.
Supervisor Maggard?
Here.
Supervisor Couch?
Here.
Supervisor Perez?
Here.
Thank you. Good afternoon and welcome to the Tuesday, May 10, 2022, 2:00 p.m. meeting of the Board of Supervisors. We will first hear from County Council Margot Arizon for a report on actions taken in closed session.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. This morning, you met in closed session on items number 88 through 93, and there is no reportable action.
Thank you. We will begin by considering the consent agenda. Agendas are located on the tables near the doors for anyone wishing to follow along. All items with a CA or a C above the item number are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. The CA represents the consent agenda for the Board of Supervisors. The C represents the consent agenda for the Kern Sanitation Authority and the Ford City Taft Heights Sanitation District. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion. If a member of the audience wishes to comment or ask questions regarding an item on the consent agenda, they may do so prior to a vote being taken. A member of the board may remove any item from the consent agenda, and it will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board concerning the item before action is taken. At this time, I will read the consent agenda item numbers for the Board of Supervisors' agenda. So, starting on page three, items seven, eight, and nine are on consent. On item eight, I need to read a correction to the recommended action. Strike all of the capitalized lettering that starts with "Adopt Resolution," and replace that with "Continue to Tuesday, May 24, 2022, at 2:00 p.m." So, please note that change. On page four, all items 10 through 12 are on consent. On page five, all items 13 through 19 are on consent. Page six, all items 20 through 25 are on consent. On page seven, items 27 through 34 are on consent. So, 26 is not on consent and will be heard in listed sequence. I also have a correction to read on item 27. So, scratch the word "approve" in capital letters and replace that with, quote, "Continue to Tuesday, June 14, 2022, at 2:00 p.m." Please note that correction. Now, onto page eight, the items 36 through 42 are on consent. So, we will hear 35 in listed sequence. And on page nine, all items 43 through 49 are on consent. So, I'll ask now if there are any members in the audience that would like to make any comments on those consent agenda items that I read. Okay, I don't see any.
Motion on consent.
Okay, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda and to adjourn as the Board of Supervisors and reconvene as the Kern Sanitation Authority.
My apologies, Chair. Now, I'll make a motion to that effect.
Thank you, Supervisor. Do we have a second? Second by Supervisor Maggard. Please cast your votes.
Thank you. The motion is approved, all eyes.
Oh, sorry. That was Supervisor Peters. I've been corrected that made the second. My apologies. Okay, all right. Okay, so we are now sitting as the Kern Sanitation Authority and will consider the consent agenda, which has item C1. And I'll ask if there are any members of the public that would like to make a comment on consent item C1. Okay, I don't see any. Then, I'll entertain a motion to approve that consent item.
Motion on consent.
A motion to second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Okay, and now we'll hear item two under Kern Sanitation Authority that is not on consent. And this is a public hearing to consider an ordinance establishing sewer service charges, a written report of sewer service charges, and authorization to collect fiscal year 2022, '23 sewer service charges on the tax roll, and continuing use of the cost of living rate adjustment formula for the next four years. Fiscal impact $5,441,141. And I have, at this time, I'm going to turn to Sam Lux, who is our interim director of Public Works, and ask him to introduce this topic and start the discussion. Mr. Lux, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Board. I have Ali Anon from my office, and he'll present this item.
Good afternoon, Mr. Anon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, the item before you today is Prop. 218, a protest hearing to consider an ordinance amending the annual sewer service charges and authorizing the collection of the service charges on the tax roll. And this is for Kern Sanitation Authority. Staff is proposing a rate adjustment formula that will allow for increases in the annual sewer service charges over the next five years in an amount not to exceed the prior calendar year annual CPI, the Consumer Price Index, increase, or 5%, whichever is less. The upcoming fiscal year, which is 2022, '23 sewer service fee, the district is proposing a 3.83% increase, and that is based on the previous year's CPI, which is the 2021 CPI rate, or from the current rate of 307.18 to 318.95. So, that's about $12 per year, or about $1 per month increase. And that's per equivalent single-family dwelling unit. The proposed service charges are necessary to offset general inflation that is being reflected in rising operational expenses, as well as to cover the expenses associated with the upcoming capital and major maintenance projects. Notices of today's hearing were mailed out to all property owners, and there were about 12,000 mailers sent out. A public meeting was also held on April 6, but no one showed up to that meeting. That concludes my presentation, and we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Anon. I'll ask if there are any questions from the board before I proceed. No questions? Okay, thank you. So, this is the time and place for the public hearing to consider the rate increase and the proposed ordinance establishing the schedule of sewer service charges for fiscal year 2022, '23, and providing for a collection of the same on the tax roll. Before I open the hearing, is there any property owner who wishes to file a written protest regarding the increased rate or the placement of those charges on the tax roll for any of these agenda items? If so, they must be filed with the clerk of the board now, as no protest will be considered that is submitted after the close of the hearing. Okay, I don't see any. Madam Clerk, have there been any written protests filed with you prior to this time for this item?
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, my office has received 11 written protests.
Thank you. I will now open the hearing and receive comments from any interested persons regarding this matter. Hearing is open. I don't see any coming forward. If anyone wishes to file a written protest, this is the last opportunity to do so. Okay, don't see any. And so, the public hearing is now closed. Mr. Anon, will you please summarize the written protest results?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Based on the 11 written protests, there is approximately 11,915 parcels. So, the number of written protests received fall well short of the required 50 plus one to constitute a successful protest. Therefore, your board can act on staff's recommendation.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And so, at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve item two on the KSA agenda and to adjourn as the Kern Sanitation Authority and reconvene as the Ford City Taft Heights Sanitation District.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion to second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you. We are now sitting as the Ford City Taft Heights Sanitation District. We have one item on that consent agenda. It's item C3, and that's proposed appointment of Samuel D. Lux as general manager and superintendent of sewers for Ford City Taft Heights Sanitation District effective April 30, 2022. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, we need to consider both items C3 and C4 on consent.
Oh, my apologies.
That's okay.
I didn't see them. So, it's also item four, which is a request to set up public hearing to consider an ordinance establishing sewer service charges, a written report of sewer service charges, and authorization to collect fiscal year 2022, '23 sewer service charges on the tax roll. And so, I'll ask if there are any persons in the audience that would like to make a comment on these two consent agenda items for the Ford City Taft Heights Sanitation District. Okay, seeing none, I'll return to the board and entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda and to adjourn as the Ford City Taft Heights Sanitation Agenda and to adjourn as the Ford City Taft Heights Sanitation District and reconvene as the Kern County Board of Supervisors.
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you. That brings us to item five on our agenda. This is Public Presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons to address the Board on any matter not on this agenda, but under the jurisdiction of the Board. Board members may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. They may ask a question for clarification, make a referral to staff for factual information, or request staff to report back to the Board at a later meeting. Also, the Board may take action to direct staff to place a matter of business on a future agenda. So I'll ask if there's anyone present that would like to make a comment under Public Presentation. Do we have any? Okay, I don't see any. Then we'll move on to Board Member announcements or reports. Do we have any announcements or reports from the Board? Okay, seeing none then. Going to move on to our items that were off consent on the Board of Supervisors Agenda, and that will begin with item 26. This is an item under the County Administrative Office, proposed resolution approving lease financing of a public safety helicopter and related equipment with Bank of America Public Capital Corp. in a principal amount of $6,400,000 for a term of seven years. And I will turn to Ryan Alsop, our Chief Administrative Officer. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I'm happy to introduce Mr. Kaler Ayala from my office, who will handle the side of...
Please proceed.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, on February 8, 2022, your Board approved a request from the Sheriff's Office to finance the acquisition of one Airbus H-125 helicopter and related outfitting equipment. The county currently has a master lease purchase agreement in place with Bank of America Public Capital Corp., through which five equipment lease financing transactions have already occurred. The proposed financing resolution before you provides authority to execute the documents necessary to complete the previously approved financing request as the sixth lease transaction. The principal amount for the financing is 6.4 million. The term of the financing is seven years at a fixed rate of 1.865%, resulting in 14 semi-annual payments of $489,757.07, and total payment due maturity of the financing The total interest cost over the term of the financing is $456,598.98. Cost of issuance fees for aviation counsel and tax counsel are estimated at $5,000 and will not be paid from financing proceeds. County Council has approved the financing documents as to form. Therefore, it is recommended that your Board approve and adopt the attached resolution approving the lease financing of a public safety helicopter with Bank of America Public Capital Corp., and authorize the Chairman to sign all related financing documents. I'm available to answer any questions that your Board may have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the Board? Seeing none, I'll ask if there's any members of the public that would like to make comment on item 26. Seeing none, a return of the Board for a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you. That brings us to item number 35 on our agenda under Legislative Matter. This is a response to a request for information regarding SB 960, removal of citizenship requirement for peace officers employed by a governmental agency. And I will once again turn to Ryan Alsop, our Chief Administrative Officer.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. This item is a response to a request for information from your Board regarding SB 960, authored by Senator Skinner, which would remove the provisions in current law that require peace officers to either be a citizen of the United States or be a permanent resident who is eligible for and has applied for citizenship. Currently, over 40 states have statutes, regulations, or administrative rules in place that restrict the ability of law enforcement agencies to employ non-citizens. Most of these states, California included, have statewide citizenship requirements or requirement that a non-citizen peace officer is at least a lawful permanent resident of the United States. Only three states have no statewide citizenship requirement for peace officers: Colorado, Vermont, and West Virginia. However, despite the absence of a citizenship requirement, federal law requires that any non-citizen seeking employment in the United States must be authorized to work in the country by the United States Citizenship and Immigration Services, or USCIS, via either an immigrant or non-immigrant visa. Thus, by omitting the citizenship requirement in state law, law enforcement agencies in these three states are permitted to hire anyone who is work authorized by the USCIS. The proposed changes in SB 960 would add California to that category. It's important to note that some local jurisdictions and individual law enforcement agencies have mandated their own citizenship requirements in the three states that currently do not have statewide citizenship requirements for peace officers. In Colorado, for example, despite the absence of a statewide citizenship requirement, the cities of Aurora and Boulder require applicants to be lawful permanent residents, and the city of Denver and El Paso County require applicants to be citizens. The current bill language does not include any provisions explicitly precluding local jurisdictions and agencies from instituting their own citizenship requirements. For context on the arguments in support of this bill, according to the author, SB 960 removes the citizenship provision from the California Peace Officer Employment Requirement because it is an archaic requirement that is non-inclusive or representative of the diverse population of people that make up the state. California already provides opportunities for residents with full legal work authorization to apply and serve in a myriad of careers. Non-citizen residents are eligible to serve as lawyers, practice medicine as physicians or nurses, and are eligible to receive professional licenses from 43 California boards and bureaus under the Department of Consumer Affairs. The author suggests that this bill would function as an effective recruitment tool for departments and improve the current relationship between law enforcement and communities of color by increasing the visibility and representation of people from the neighborhoods they police. Conversely, opponents of the bill cite the legal precedent set in the 1982 U.S. Supreme Court case Cabell versus Chavez-Salido, in which the court ruled that a provision in the California Government Code that requires peace officers to be United States citizens was, one, not unconstitutional, two, not discriminatory, and, three, where officers sufficiently partake in the sovereign's power to exercise coercive force over the individual, a citizenship requirement is an appropriate limitation on those who exercise and therefore symbolize this power of the political community over those who fall within its jurisdiction. Additionally, opponents argue that if the bill becomes law, background investigators would not have the legal authority or investigative tools necessary to communicate with a hostile foreign nation over a non-citizen applicant's criminal or potential terrorist background. Therefore, it is recommended that your Board receive and file this report and provide direction. I would add that, in looking at a recent Senate, I believe, Public Safety Committee analysis of the bill, the organizations that are currently in support of this bill include the University of California, who is, I believe, one of the sponsors of this bill, the California Police Chiefs Association, the California Public Defenders Association, and the city of Oakland. Those organizations opposing the bill include the California Statewide Law Enforcement Association, the Peace Officers Research Association of California, and the Riverside County Sheriff's Office. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Alsop. I'll ask Supervisor Couch, I see you punched. Shall I go to the public first? Okay, thank you. I'll ask if there's any members of the audience who would like to make a comment on this item. Seeing none, a return of the Board. Supervisor Couch.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Alsop, for bringing this back. The part that I think is probably the most important to me is that last paragraph that you read off there that started with "conversely," talking about the '82 Supreme Court case, and really the difficulty in doing background checks. So I would like to see us take a position in opposition and authorize the Chairman to sign a letter to that effect. I'll just make a motion to that effect and leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion to oppose this piece of legislation. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, four eyes, one absent. Supervisor Perez.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That brings us to the conclusion of our business on this agenda, and so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, May 24 at 9:00 a.m. We are adjourned.